Called to order, the Town Superior Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, June 10, 2014. Could we have the roll call, please, fellas?
Okay. Chairperson, Clint Paulson.
Here.
Vice Chairperson, Bob McCool.
Here.
Commissioners, Rita Dozel.
Here.
Joanna.
Here.
Paulus Sartin, here.
Bob Momarts.
Here.
Tom Ricker.
Here.
Jim Satell.
Here.
Attorney, Kendra Carberry.
Here.
Planner, Fred Fox.
Here.
Thank you. Next is public comment on consent agenda or non-agenda items. Anyone from the public wish to speak on consent agenda or non-agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The approval of the May 20, 2014 minutes. Anyone have any comments on the minutes from May 20? I had two corrections, or have two corrections. On page four, public comments made by the following. Carrrie Nash, it's C-A-R-R-I-E is the correct spelling of her first name.
I'm sorry, say it again.
C-A-R-R-I-E. And then on page five, just right above the announcements paragraph, it says Lisa Ritchie said there's five comments that follows, and there's six bullet points here. And...
I think the last one was...
The last one wasn't really one of the bullet points, so that's the issue. And then Ms. Ritchie had given me a more expanded version of these, and I think that would be better. I think those would be better in the minutes, particularly the one that says acknowledge that Superior Way already exists, because it just kind of leaves the question why. So, yeah, if you could add those. With those changes, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Commissioner McCool, second by Commissioner Dozel. All in favor? Let's see. Passes... It's unanimous. We had, a couple of you weren't here, so shouldn't vote on them.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
Abstain.
So that's Commissioners Eaton and Ricker?
Yeah, Eaton and Ricker abstain. Otherwise, it's unanimous.
Okay.
Okay, item number five is a public hearing and adoption of resolutions recommending to the Board of Trustees approve the following. Final plat for Discovery Office Park Superior Town Center combined, case number SUB-FP-2014-1. Final plat number two for Superior Town Center in case number SUB-FP-2014-2. Final development plan for Superior Office, I'm sorry, final development plan for Discovery Office Park in case number FDP-2014-1, and final development plan Phase Two for Superior Town Center in case number FDP-2014-2. So this is a continuation of the public hearing that we opened previously. Want to start with the developer presentation?
Jim Brastovich, Civil Resources, 323 Fifth Street. Frederick?
Jim Brastovich, 5600 Pennsylvania New Builder. So, here's the FDP for the roadway. The plan is basically illustrating the realignment of the roadway as we've talked about in the past. Basically, this is showing a different radius, a different grading plan that relates to the town center further to the east. It's also showing a continuation of landscaping that is basically out there today and matching that in new pitch. So, not much more than that.
Just a little bit of context here. What we're seeing here, this was the entire PD amendment that was just passed by the Board. What we're looking at here is just a little piece of Discovery Parkway. We're not looking at any development on anywhere else in this, as part of this final development plan.
Are you actually doing grading as well?
We are. This map shows kind of the extent of grading, and this grading would be done in conjunction with the grading for Superior Town Center Block 25. So as we're reprofiling the road, we may take away some of this soil stockpile that's left over from the original Discovery construction, and we'll reprofile or recreate this hill, which also predicates taking out some of the trees there that used to show, was shown on the demo plan. That's why we have to take them out and do some replacements. And this is just a road profile. Here's the landscape plan, which shows replacing the trees basically in kind along the road. We aren't replacing all of the trees on the slope right now, because they'll get replaced as we develop the actual slope. Right here, this is future building pad for Discovery Office Park. This will just be basically native seeded until not real, not permanent landscaping in this area. This is the plat. This is almost identical to the preliminary plat that was approved by the Board. The only change here is the Board did not approve the flex office, the flex building. So what we did is we added a separate lot here. This is a commercial lot, just reserved for future development, but the preliminary plat that was approved did not have this lot created. It was all one big lot. So we just carved out this piece, so that we can always refer to this piece as the piece that we were talking about for the future building. That's the only difference in the plats. That is all we have.
Okay. Normally, we would go through all of this and then do Board questions or Commissioner questions later, but if anybody wants to just address them now, I think that'd be the most efficient way, since there's no public to comment. So anybody want to have questions on this piece?
I just have a couple clarification questions. So that area there, does that become, it's Block 1, Lot 3, but I think it's someplace, somewhere else I saw that it was going to become Block 1, Lot 2?
Yeah, that was a, that was basically a typo on the plat. Should be Block 1, Lot 2, and that's one of the conditions of the recommended, to correct that. Should be Block 1, Lot 2.
Okay, so that, the area that was talked about as a flex building is now Block 1, Lot 2?
Correct.
And then Lot 5, Lot 2, this is not shown on Sheet 2 of 9 in the FDP. I don't know that that's a big deal, but on the long sheets, it doesn't just, it doesn't show if that Lot 5, Lot 2 is not identified on that. But that's more of a correction. If, you can take a look at that later. It's on Sheet 2 of 9.
We don't have the whole plat on this, on this presentation, so I can't page it.
Yeah, it's down at the bottom, you know, down to the bottom corner, left or right-hand corner down there. And then, let's see, let me look at the plot or plat. That 50 feet of public access easement along there...
Here.
Yeah, that was in the STC filing number 1B, but you mentioned it again, I just, to show that it's attached, it's already on the original Superior Town Center filing number 1B. But I didn't know if there was a change that you mentioned it, or why we're...
It was actually on filing 1B as a utility easement.
Okay.
We're creating, we're making it 60 feet wide from 50, so that it actually touches this Discovery Block 1, Lot 2, and it becomes an access and utility easement. Eventually, this will become right away when this block is platted, but we wanted to make sure that there was access across this frontage.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then, I didn't know what the Detail A on Sheet 4 of 4 was. That's a lot, that's a little piece along the castle in there. What is that? Why is that?
Oh, on the plat, you mean?
Yeah, I'm looking at the plat now, sorry.
Let's, we will hold the questions for the plat until we, until we go through them, because we're going to go through these separately.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he had already talked about the plat.
Well, that presentation was for both.
Yeah, he was, yeah. So...
Then let's do it.
Okay, sorry. It's on Sheet 4 of 4 on the plat. Must be, it's, that's not the, okay, that's a replat. Yeah, okay, must be on 5, but my wonder. It's that little stuff along the castle on there's, maybe I can see if I'm looking at the, yeah, I'm looking at the plat.
All right, are you sure that's the Discovery plat and not the Superior Town Center plat?
It's Discovery Park, Office Park, and Town Center preliminary plat, so I don't know which one this is. It says Discovery Office Park, and, so maybe this is not yours. Mine says here, final plat, Discovery Office Park.
That's what they...
Yeah, and slash, okay, so it's Detail A, Sheet 4 of 4, and it's along the castle in there, there's like little cutouts and stuff, I don't know. I didn't know what it was, I was just curious what it was.
Can I, do you have the...
Yeah, I got it. Somebody else can go ahead and...
Were there some, were there some detail there?
No, the Director's Parcels, is it the Director's Parcels? The Director's Parcels, those may, yeah, that's probably what it is.
Yeah, that's what it is.
It's right here, the 325...
Right, it shows a detail of that, right.
Yeah, those are already existing.
Well, what is it, though? I don't know what it is.
Those are lots, can I ask Randy to define what the Director's Parcels is?
Yeah. Good evening, Randy Goodson with RC Superior. Addressing the question about the Director's Parcels on RC Superior, Superior Town Center, we have a Metropolitan District that was formed by the Board, and Metropolitan District needs to be operated as a public agency, much like the Town Board is operated as a public agency. The requirement of that is that the only voters are voters who have a legal interest in the project. And the only way to have a legal interest in the project and be a Colorado resident is, was for us to identify three small parcels, and then essentially contractually enter into an agreement that gave legal rights to those, each of those three parcels, to each of the three people that agreed to run for the Board. And those three people, then after they were, the court, the Colorado Court in Boulder, reviewed those legal documents and certified that those three people who put themselves up for election were qualified based upon all the factors, including their legal ownership in the property, or their ownership interest in the property, which is within the property boundary. And based on that, unqualified then for the ballot, and they were put on the ballot in the run door and publicly elected. And they sit as the Directors of the Superior Town Center Metropolitan District. There's three of them, Districts 1, 2, and 3. The, in the future, as future residents move in, there'll be more people that have legal interests and are qualified to run for election to the Board. So that will change over time, but we needed to have three people on the Board, so that's what we did.
So they have their names, they own those plots of land, is that what you're saying?
No.
Oh. Why is it Detail L, I guess I was surprised. I don't understand.
They're just three, they're three legal parcels that are necessary for the process.
Okay, so actually pieces of land, though, that are identified with Directors? No?
There are three legal parcels.
Okay.
One legal parcel is identified with an individual Director. Another legal parcel is identified with another Director, and another legal parcel is identified with a third Director and his wife.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Because of community property.
All right, okay.
The same thing was done at the far gone Wable, gone by beginning of Rock Creek, for the Metro Districts there.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know what it was, so...
Thank you, many residency.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the, on the final plat for Discovery or Superior Town Actually, we did the final development plan for Discovery and then the final plat for Discovery. Those are the two we've done. Okay, any further questions on those items? Okay, so we'll move on to final development plan Phase 2 for Superior Town Center, and then followed by the final plat for Superior Town Center.
Good evening, Randy Goodson with RC Superior. Thank you again for taking the time to consider this final development plan, one of many that we'll be coming forward with. The exciting stuff is getting a little closer. We have a park to talk about, the rest are streets and utilities. In the future, there'll be more final development plans that have buildings. This one doesn't have any buildings. So I'll try to skim through, let me know if you have any particular questions. It's the cover sheet, I'm just going to scroll through our application and point out some of the highlights. These are the area where you can see, this is Discovery Office Park that was just presented, and this is the cut line, the property line, based on replat, and this shows the improvements that are included in this FDP. This dash line here, it shows the area of the improvements. There's street detail we've worked on with your staff, and consistent with the approved plan development. Several sheets identifying the street details. This sheet here identifying the street detail around the Village Green, and a few early references to some improvements on the Village Green, there's other exhibits that did a This is the detention basin that was in the approved plan development amendment number 2. We are now showing walls in the detention basin to increase the area available for the Central Park. This is the area of the Central Park. There are no walls shown here. This is just shown at a manufactured grade that would be modified in the future when the park plans are approved. Then we'll come back with a plan that shows the walls and park plans. This is another piece of the park. The cemetery is here. The last sheet we were looking at was right down in here, and now we're, in the area we're showing, we're adding a burn between the portion of the park and the residential block of 24 and US 36. We're also showing the pathway. This is the pathway that will connect to the future US 36 pathway connecting Boulder and Denver. That pathway is shown in dotted line off our property here. Here's our connection point, and here's where we bring the pathway into Central Park and into Avenue D. This is highlighting a bunch of minutia of utility locations and things like that. This is the overall grading plan. You can see the areas that are being graded, and the provision for blocks are starting to take shape. More minutia related to the drainage, the drainage flows, street sections and wall One thing I'll point out is that Avenue D was narrowed in the last PD to remove parking along this curve. The, in a couple places, we have removed parking on the inside portion of a curve, so that cars won't get hit because of sight distance and speed. Wall designs for the detention basin. This is the person going up to existing Discovery Parkway. This is another area, I believe there'll be a staff condition, we're evaluating the removal of parking on one side, on this side where the curve comes around, and it's both a, you have a horizontal curve that would go sort of flat like this, and you have a vertical curve that would curve down. And so the combination is there's a horizontal and vertical curve that goes to a vertical curve, and a horizontal and vertical curve coming here. So, one staff condition is we're evaluating removing parking on this entire side of the street. Perhaps somewhere over here, we might reintroduce parking, but we'll remove parking, on street parking on one side to avoid a potentially dangerous condition. These are street sections that are consistent with the approved PD. This is the overall landscape plan, the only thing really being landscaped, other than street trees that are identified, is the Village Green. I will, the Village Green, for reference, is identified in the PD as programming to be determined by developer and town. The way we've proceeded with that is to make a recommendation on the programming for the Village Green, and then to achieve the agreement between the developer and the town through this process. So we look forward to your comments. What we're showing here is sort of enhanced corners. The transition from Main Street into the areas, blocks farther away from Main Street, we have on Main Street, of course, heavy use of sandstone and pavers and concrete. And as we get one block away, we will transition out to less use of pavers, but still pavers and some sandstone enhancements. And then as we get farther away, we'll approach the Village Green, and there'll be certain corners where we have these enhanced corners along the pedestrian promenade, and as you get farther away off of the pedestrian promenade and the intended pedestrian routes, they'll go to more traditional streets in the PD and in the town, so that people will have a, perhaps a subconscious guidance towards the areas where we want them to be pedestrian-oriented, more pedestrian-heavy, and those are the wider pedestrian corridors as well. Planting, pictures of street, tree shadows. Can't make out a lot from the street, the tree shadows. I have a better image of the Village Green at the end, so we can talk about that. Again, this is still the planting. The, by the way, relative to planting, PD says we have to comply with the Town Code regarding planting, and so we've gone through these plans with your staff to make sure they comply with the Town Code. These are the street amenities identified in the PD. Candidly, still not thrilled with the bike parking. We know we don't want the bike parking to be the standard curved bike parking, we want it to be something special, as we told the Town Board. This was, this is reflective of something special, architecturally significant. We are trying, we're continuing to pursue a, something that is architecturally significant and distinct, and yet consistent with the other street amenities that we'll have in the town. So we expect to come back, and that might be a staff substantial performance issue. It may come back before the Planning Commission and the Board, not quite certain. I want to be candid about that. More details on the landscape, root balls and things like that.
Randy, would you want to go back to the mentions of the Board, like the Commissioner that she planned to build the dog park? Is that a recent finding?
Let's see, did I pass that?
There you go.
As Staff suggested, we found an area that I think we've referenced before, between BDI and US 36. And in preparing our detailed grading, the final approval of the FDP-2 for, which was for the building, Phase 1 FDP-2, for the building, the Boulder Valley Island Indoor Sports Facility, the Board requested that we go back and try to identify modifications to landscaping, so that we can enhance the visual shielding of the back of the building fronting US 36. So we have a few administrative amendments that are on that FDP, that were areas where we were able to add in burns, in some cases in cooperation with CDOT. And we're pursuing an easement with CDOT, so that they don't do all their work and finish it at their property line, and we have a distance from their easement, so that it's all built together. And by doing that, we're able to have a better burn, and you can have a higher burn than your trees, even the younger trees, will add to the visual shielding earlier in their life, and overall, it'll just be a better environment. And doing that, and going through that effort, between the BDI property here and US 36 here, this is the line of the cemetery. We found an area that, right next to a pathway, that has a slope to it. And when I saw this area, I said, ah, dog park! And we have a lot of people that are going to have dogs, it's right next to a trail. I've put dog parks in a lot of places with slope, dogs seem to love it. Not the place you'll go for picnicking anyway, even if there wasn't, you know, evidence of dog, dog activity. And so, we think it's a great spot for a dog park. It's a big area. We have shown it to be fenced in for small dogs and for big dogs. We have amenities here, in the form of water bowls, really doggy water fountains, push a button up here and water comes out down there. So that's the details in there. There's not a lot of trees because of the urea, is, the intensity of urea, there's only a few things, a few plant materials that sustain in that environment. But this is pretty much shielded. It's shielded from 36, shielded from the project. It's not going to look great. Dogs will have a lot of fun there, people will have a lot of fun taking their dogs there. It's the perfect location, from my perspective, for a significant dog park. Street lighting conforms with the PD. These are numbers that identify, that just prove that. These are streetlights that are part of the PD. These are street lights that are part of the PD. Fun stuff, Village Green. The town center is to the left of the screen. The Main Street would be to the left. These streets here on either end going to the bottom will connect ultimately to Discovery Parkway and McCaslin. This corner here, kind of where this bench is, that, that corner in the land plan is the site reserved for Boulder Valley School District's early childhood education center for the eastern portion of their district. And so, taking from that, um, the fact that this is the pedestrian promenade, Central Park is up above, one block over. School is here. We wanted to have, um, a play area for older siblings and things to keep them occupied when they're going, when the parents go to the preschool. We have street calming and we have, we're guiding pedestrians, um, to this particular location to cross so that, uh, in, in a lot of discussions with staff and our experts, we identified this as the, the safest, um, way to cross pedestrians. It allows us to have a table intersection at all four corners. So that cars coming across those streets will go up and down and up and down. You go too fast, you go up and down and up and down with more velocity. And so, in, when you connect, when you have locations, you start off with where do you want the people to cross? And when you identify the places you want the people to cross, you have to, all the rest of the plan follows from that. Because people will walk, um, people have a tendency to want to walk in straight lines exactly where they're going unless it's really inconvenient. And so what we've done is we've, um, put burning and landscaping here to make it inconvenient to cross, and people will. Also burning and landscaping here to make it inconvenient. As a, there's two other benefits of the burning and landscaping here, which is if cars aren't paying attention or overshoot, brakes don't work, um, they're going to hit a curb and then go into a burn with trees. And then a structure here before they get into the park. Also at night, even the cars doing all the right things, this burning landscaping will shield their lights so people enjoying park activities won't be hit by the constant barrage of, of automobile lights. Same thing comes and occurs in both directions. So that drove the orientation of the sidewalks, um, because we want people to feel that this is the location they want to get to in the park to, to make a decision where to go. So there's bicycles here, grills up here, uh, grills and bicycle racks, uh, grills over here, bicycle racks over there. We have a gazebo. This is a, a nice, um, copper roof, uh, looking, uh, gazebo that won't take forever to turn green. It comes out looking like it's aged copper. Thirty feet in diameter and, uh, I think it'll create a nice, um, opportunity for everything from picnics to parties to a bandstand. This is the grill type, same type of street amenities that we've shown other places. And, um, and then we have the big open grass area. There'll be lighting, um, here and lighting here for the streets. There'll be two lights here and here and here and here. It'll create, um, the type of lighting environment where, um, at nighttime you'll be able to see the police, people will be able to see through the park and, and so there'll still be, um, there, there won't be a high expectation for privacy, um, which is a bad thing in parks. So that's, that's the park plan. We'll, that's the end of the presentation at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to talk about the final plat as well?
I do, sure. The, um, final plat is, uh, implementing what was approved by the board and by the planning commission recently. And, uh, we have, you know, the exhibits just documenting the, um, the blocks that have been formed with this, uh, final plat, just, I believe it's these four pages. First page.
Okay. Anyone on the commission have any questions? When I have, um, why don't we have staff have, kind of go through the conditions and then?
I do have some questions, so.
We'll, we'll circle back to questions, yeah. I wanted to.
I'll speak to a few and I'll let Alex there and I'll speak to a few. Lisa Ritchie, town staff. Just go through the conditions briefly, just so that, uh, planning commission has a chance to understand where we were coming from as staff as we created these. Starting with Discovery Office Park Superior Town Center final plat, uh, there's a condition for public access easements, um, and I've chatted with this about the applicant, there's just not public access easements covering some of the existing sidewalks. And then as Commissioner Desal had, um, asked some questions regarding the public access easement, um, on Block 9, Lot 1, kind of where that new lot was created, just ensuring that, that that's allowed for access. And then the Block 3 Lot, or Block 1, Lot 3 shall be revised to Block 1, Lot 2, just a typo. Moving on then to the Superior Town Center final plat. Staff is suggesting a few conditions regarding access easements, um, on tract D1, shown in the location for, um, trail connections to US 36 as well. Um, we've been working with the applicant regarding access to Superior Cemetery, or the historic cemetery up there. It's their intent to accommodate access in a future FDP. However, staff would suggest that an access easement of 10 feet in width be added to the plat for trail and maintenance, um, from Avenue E to the Superior Cemetery with the exact location of the easement to be determined by the town. 10 feet is adequate in staff's opinion. We've checked with Parks and Recreation and Maintenance and we believe 10 feet should be more than adequate.
Utility easement?
Oh, did I skip one? Oh, I'm sorry. Um, additionally, um, Alex's staff has identified the need for a 20-foot utility easement running the entire property length, um, adjacent to US 36 and Super Lot 5, um, just for future forced main access and things like that along in there. Moving on to the Discovery Office Park final development plan. Um, essentially the only condition we've identified is the typo, um, regarding Lot 1, Block 1, Lot 3. And I'm going to speak to a few of these then for Superior Town Center FDP and I'll let Alex speak to a few as well. Regarding the dog park design, staff is suggesting that, um, the design of the fencing and all of the amenities be consistent with the Autry Park, um, dog park over there. So the fencing is a little more, um, enhanced than, than what's shown in their FDP and staff feels that what's over there functions very well and, um, we'd like to see that level of, um, quality. Additionally, the lighting plan for the Village Green, we just, um, are conditioning that we need to kind of refine that and potentially look at that a little closer. We're not convinced that adequate security lighting exists as shown. And then I'll speak to the Village Green. Final design of the Village Green amenities, including the gazebo and the play area, shall be jointly determined by the town and developer. And it's our understanding, working with Prostack and the town board, conditions from the plan development amendment, that, um, these will be determined following the July 14th recommendations from Prostack to the town board. So at that time, um, Prostack has been working over the last year to determine amenities and desires from the community. So they will be making their formal recommendations to the board on July 14th. At that time, once those amenities come forth, um, the final design for the Village Green, any amenities that might go in there, in addition to what's shown, um, it's staff's understanding that Prostack and, um, what has come out of the Prostack process regarding the Village Green is, is fairly similar. So staff doesn't necessarily have a problem bringing forth the application to this point, um, understanding that those final amenities will be determined later in July or potentially August, September. Alex, would you like to speak to Avenue D? Yeah. Showing where the tables are.
So Avenue D on the FDP, uh, was 34 feet wide. It did show parking on one side, it was kind of undefined on the other side. They've asked that this be reduced to 30 feet. I think we've seen one plan for some off-street parking, but that plan is kind of, you know, out there being debated. So they've, they've offered this plan. And my concern is that this is a very, um, high intense area where we potentially have, you know, parked down there by the cemetery and that whole discussion of parcel three. And then we have Boulder Valley Ice, which we know has their parking, um, issues. So if we have this at 30 feet, I'm concerned that people will be parking along here, they'll see this open stretch and they'll want to park there. So we have parking on both sides with 30 feet, you know, kind of a narrow roadway. We could sign it, no parking, and that presents an enforcement, enforcement issue for, for the town, trying to keep parking off and trying to battle with people's, you know, likely park there. So that's my concern here about, um, not having a 34-foot wide. I think we're going to resolve this down the road as we get more detail on, on parcel three and if this comes out to be, uh, some off-street parking with a couple of driveways, maybe it makes some sense. But I didn't have all the detail, we don't have that, that parcel three development plan yet to really be able to do that. So we were, uh, asking that that be, um, in conformance of the PD at 34 feet until such time that we have another plan that, that replaces it, I guess.
Jim can, uh, you can argue that.
Not being one of the two guys with invitation to, uh, argue a condition. Very valid points. We don't have an approved plan for the park here. The, um, town board did ask us to find an off-street, an off-street parking location and the only way we could do that with the detention basin here. And to have an efficient off-street parking, we needed two rows of parking, so a, a drive aisle and then, um, diagonal parking on both sides. And so the only way to accommodate that between the detention basin and the detention capacity that we needed to have, we, um, further extended walls. I'll show you. We further extended walls in the detention basin. The walls previously stopped back here and actually, is this the?
No, actually, in the, in the version where we showed the off-street parking lot.
We extend this over here.
Even further. We needed the extra space. No, Jim Brostovich again, sorry. The, uh, we needed to narrow the road to get enough space to fit this parking lot in between what was left of the road and this detention bond wall, so.
So, um, candidly, would we agree, staff has brought up a, a point, if, um, there's a couple of, of related, these, these are related topics, everything in development is, uh, making a choice of one thing over another. Must be this one, three times the charm. Previous to that, that's, Alex, I believe there was a concern that we had parking on the inside of a curve. And so we, we previously had that concern about whether that parking was going to function anyway. And then you heard our civil engineer just describe the solution that, that we came up with, that both eliminated a few parking spaces here. By putting the parking in here, we have a net increase of 26 spaces, um, so a pretty significant increase. And, um, uh, so that is, you know, I, I, I think there's another perspective I, uh, you know, I, I think, um, it's hard to plan a community around, um, doing, avoiding people breaking the law. I mean, we want to have safety and security, um, but, you know, there's, um, we want really wide sidewalks. We want to make sure cars don't drive on, on those sidewalks. There's, there's trade-offs. In this instance, we want cars to drive slowly, we want off-street parking and, um, you know, there's perhaps a compromise somewhere in the context of, um, uh, I think the timing will work out where we're going to get the recommendation from Prostack on Central Park and the town board will approve a plan for the Central Park before we start construction of Avenue D. And perhaps there could be an alternative that, um, you know, kind of puts the pressure on the town, it's a self-imposed deadline, but, um, you know, conceivably, if you were so inclined, um, we would accept the condition that if this park plan with the off-street parking is not approved, um, prior to the construction, prior to when we need to construct Avenue D, that we would construct it as 34 feet wide and we'd just live with that condition. And, you know, this town has been great and we've worked together with time schedules on a lot, a lot of things, a lot more complicated than this. So I would expect that we could achieve that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the public like to make any comments before we get going on questions? Any public comment? Okay. Let's circle back to questions now for the developer who'd like to start. Commissioner Desal.
Uh, some clarifications, I guess, on the final plat. It says preliminary on the front, I don't know, I guess that's just a technicality for the engineer that signs it, even though it's.
The surveyor likes to have preliminary in his title, signature block until he's ready to sign it. Oh, it's a final plat.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, I see, let's see, oh, maybe make sure I'm looking at, yeah, the final plat. If, you've added Avenue E, which has never been on any other documents before. So, um, I was just, it, it actually has been Avenue D up until this point, but now it says Avenue E on this plat. That was a new one for me. I don't know if it's necessary to add another letter of street until we come up with names. I mean.
Sorry, I can speak to that. I forgot to mention one final condition that we had and that's the board is, we're anticipating, bringing forth the street names to the board as an exhibit on the June 23rd hearing, taking your comments from, um, the May 20th meeting. At that time, should street names be approved, the final plat would be amended to reflect, um, the approved street names prior to recognition. So, um, the final plat would reflect the actual, actual names.
Okay. And I did see that, thank you, Lisa, on, on your recommendations, but I was just curious again, when I was looking through it, that I saw a new Avenue E that's never been there before. I don't think we should confuse the board by adding another avenue that wasn't there. Um, and then the 10-foot access to the Superior Cemetery that's been proposed, um, it, it's not on the plat, I don't believe, but it's on the FDP and it shows eight feet on the FDP, not 10. So I just want to make sure we kind of come together maybe and make that the same.
We show on FDP as a conceptual eight-foot trail.
Uh-huh.
It's not on the plat because, uh, this whole tract is going to be dedicated to the town, but, uh, the, the access easement was kind of an additional level of comfort, I guess, for the, for the town. But whether the path is eight feet or 10 feet, we can make it either way, whichever.
Cause in the condition it says 10, but on the FDP it says eight and there it's not shown at all. So we just.
Through the FDP, it shows an eight-foot wide path.
Okay.
Right, there's no easement on this plat.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then the 20-foot easement, right now, if I understand that, for a long Super Lot 5, it shows 20 feet halfway down Super. it shows 20 feet halfway down Superlot 5. But Fred, are you suggesting that it needs, and then 10 feet along the rest of the half of Superlot 5? So are you saying that it needs to be 20 feet all the way along Superlot 5? Because that's on Sheet 3 of 5 and 5 of 5.
What it does is put the easement inside the property line, whereas now, part of it's outside of property line. Correct, and it looks on the back of the way. And that's probably due to CDOT's acquisition of property. And they just eat everything off whatever's an easement or whatever. So that's the idea, is not, Alex, to put that easement on the inside, inside of the property line. So the force main. That's why we easement along the property line on 36.
It shows 20 foot to the center, to the middle there, and then it jogs over. Yeah, it's 20 there, and then it jogs in and it gets down to 10. 10 foot, so...
See, the force main, existing force main is coming along here. And we're having issues with CDOT how to get access to it because in some cases, it's inside their fence, but they don't allow access in that right way. So we're working with them. And force main comes down here, but then the new force main kind of shifts over to the cemetery sewer area. And then we have this easement inside the...
Inside the CDOT right away.
Correct. What this is, this is the existing gravity cemetery sewer that runs down to 88th Street. And part of that existing pipe is in CDOT's right-of-way, part of it's outside of. We aren't planning to redo that pipe. What the staff is asking for is just an easement to access those manholes. And we would like to be able to put a trail in that. So we would like it not to be an exclusive. Eventually, when we develop that superlot, we envision continuing a path from where CDOT's bridge is down to the south. So we would like to be able to put a path in that utility.
Okay, that sounds good. I was just, you know, I saw the condition about the 20-foot, and I saw that it's 20 feet, and then it goes down to 10. I didn't know if we're talking about the same 20 feet or not. It goes only on... It's on Sheet 3 of 5 and 5 of 5. It shows 20 feet halfway through Superlot 5, and then it goes down to 10. I don't know if it's the same easement that we're talking about.
The easement that's only 10 feet wide, whatever, is an easement that predates any of us being involved. That's from the original construction of the cemetery sewer. The reason it's split is because CDOT took part of that land.
Okay, so you'll have a 20-foot one go all the way down?
We would add a 20-foot easement.
Okay, thank you. And then going to the FDP. Now, I know we're showing, or you're showing, Discovery Parkway North and Discovery Parkway South going one way on each, either side of the Village Green. I think when we talked about, I thought, I remember when we talked about the street names, that you didn't want to have a Discovery Park going north and a Discovery Park south because of numbers on both sides of the street. But I might be wrong about that. I just want to make sure that we're consistent and, you know, you do what works for you when you start putting houses along there. Because we had that discussion, Randy, I don't know if you remember that, but I thought you were the one that said you didn't want to have a north and south going on both sides, you know, when talking about, you know...
I do. Randy Goodson, actually, Superior. The... We stopped modifying and changing street names. Just, that's all we were doing. And we're waiting for the town board to select the street names. And once they do, all the exhibits, there's a condition, all the exhibits, everything will be changed and unified to have those street names. So I apologize, the street names are confusing. Hopefully, we can refer to the roads with names and their numbers and letters for the time being.
Okay.
But that's correct.
That's great. I think that's fine. I just want to know if you had changed your mind or come up with a different proposal on this? Because it said specifically Discovery Parkway South and North, which I thought we had decided that wasn't going to work right now. Okay, great. And then there's a Drive A mentioning the narrative. I don't know where that is. Just if someone could try and figure out if Drive A connects to...
It is Discovery Parkway.
Okay, so Drive A, it's in the narrative, but I couldn't figure out where it is.
It's in the language, and someone kept sneaking in there.
Okay, yeah. And then the bump outs and the placement of the bike lanes, you know, on all the street designs, and the stop signs. I was trying to, I don't want to design that, but I think that some places around the Village Green, there's stop signs on both sides of the street, the one-way streets, and in others, there aren't. And I think it's always good to have stop signs on both sides of the streets so that, you know, because if your car's going along and the bike lane is going beside it, sometimes you don't see the stop sign. But again, I would leave that up to all of you.
Those are one-way streets.
Yeah, I know. But on some one-way streets, there's stop signs shown on the diagram. I'm just, you know, that there's stops on both sides of the intersection. And on another one-way street, there's only a stop sign on one side of the intersection. So there's inconsistency there. But I know this isn't, you know, when you get it down to the final, actually placing the stop signs, you'll do the right thing. But in these diagrams, some places, there's two on both sides. Some places, there's only one in, when I was looking through the diagrams. And I would just say that as I go with where there's bike lanes, you know, especially like we go on Rock Creek Parkway and you turn onto McCaslin, I'm telling you, those bikers take their lives in their hands as they have to try and cross over and go around an intersection, particularly if there isn't a distinct stop sign there. So anytime we have an opportunity to put a stop sign when we have a bike lane going past, I would make the car stop. And like, because the bikers will not stop. You know, they will just keep flying. Today, I almost hit the one doing that as we're going into, down McCaslin, off Rock Creek, down McCaslin and into Marshall Road. That biker never stopped once. I had to stop many times, but he never stopped once. And each time, he came up around me. So it was just, the bump outs, I think, are a good idea. Or someplace else, they call them a dump something or something, I don't know, dump downs or something. But I think those are good. But I would just ask that as you do those final placement of the bike lanes. And on the one-way streets, which side of the road? I don't expect an answer. I just, which side of the street is the bike lane on? You know, because, huh?
On the right side.
It's on the right side. But sometimes when you're turning, you're actually turning into some of those bikers. So it's just, it's a dangerous thing. So, and the bike lanes, will they just be striped? Or will they be designated as a bike lane in some other way? Like with a different concrete or maybe some kind of, they're just going to be striped?
Yeah, just striped.
Okay, thank you. The Village Green design, I really like the bums on the end. I think that's an excellent way to actually make this feel like it's an enclosed, small pocket park. I don't know that you need grills in there, but that's just a personal opinion. I see that if you, you know, the grills, especially around the playground area and on the east end down there, I'm not sure if people will be grilling down there. On the other end, possibly, where the gazebo is. I find that grills are used in Purple Park, our bigger park areas, but they're not used in the smaller areas. Any place where I seem to walk generally in Superior, where there's a smaller grassy area and a grill, I rarely see it used. I see it used a lot in Purple Park. So I would just...
It's used heavily out here.
I'm sorry?
It's used heavily here, similar-sized park.
Yeah.
Can you tell us, James?
Yeah, in original town. Maybe because of the type of people that are, you know, the residents that are living around there. So I just ask the question to consider that as you go through the final design. And you're going to work that out with Prostack and the town anyway. More lights on the pathway in the Village Green. Absolutely, positively want path lighting on the sidewalks. I walked through Purple Park at night, and when those lights went out, you know, the original lights that were in there, and now they've been replaced or they're gradually replacing, they're great to have the sidewalk actually lit at night. Not just the lights from the street light, but path lighting, the sidewalk lighting, the ones that stick up, you know. I would highly encourage path lighting around the sidewalks within the Village Green. The dog park, I think the placement of the dog park in the, behind the building there, behind the parking garage structure, there's really not too much else you can do back there. And if you want to build a dog park there, I think that's up to you, you know, as a developer, to go ahead and do that. I've heard from people that have said to me that we have a dog park and it's, and it's great for the town. That if that's something that you find you need for the development, then go for it. The extension of the trail, the bike trail that's in there to the CDOT trail, it says that you're not actually connecting that. There's a future FDP that you're extending that trail down to Avenue D. And I didn't know, is that, I didn't know why. I mean, it's within this FDP, isn't it? Or what would be the reason not to extend it?
We're not constructing that portion of Avenue D. Or it's actually Avenue E.
Okay.
That area of street is not part of this FDP, so...
Okay, just goes up to the corner up there, and you're not going to, okay. And then, again, the eight-foot versus 10-foot. Thank you for explaining that, Jim, about that 10-foot easement, eight-foot path proposed to the cemetery. Cemetery access on the north side, I would also like to recommend that we take a look at that, where the turnaround is for the irrigation easement and the road that's going to be there. Where I say north side, I mean the opposite side from where you're, where you've planned this proposed sidewalk. Because the cemetery had a place where you could park before. So, you know, to have ability to get a car up there for someone who wants to go up there and either visit a grave or maybe participate in the spirit walk or things like that at Halloween would be something that should be considered. And that's on the other side. I don't know if that's not necessarily part of this FDP. But if it is, I think we should consider that or make, make sure that if we can, there's a way to implement that. Do you know what I'm talking about, Jim? That on the other side, there's a turnaround for the irrigation easement, the 30-foot irrigation easement. And that would make a good spot, perhaps. I don't know, I haven't been out there to see how you've excavated that. But that might be a good place to actually allow a car to get up closer to the cemetery for someone to actually get up there. Because now that where our car access has been filled in, there's no way to get a car up there. And there's going to be times where we're going to need to have cars get up there. And then, let's see, on the lights that were shown, are those the ones that were selected in the final FDP 1? I thought we selected different lights in FDP 1. That's just more of a comment, you don't have to answer that right now. But they look different than the ones I remember from FDP 1. Just would like to double-check that to see. And then if they're going to be different, why would they be different than the ones that are in FDP 1? You are outside of the town center, so that might be one reason. But you're not that far outside of the town center. So the question I would have, would we really have different streetlights? I'm talking about the streetlights. And then my last comment is on Sheet 4.0 of the FDP. There's some additional detail for Superlot 5 that's outside of the FDP. And I'm not sure why it's on there. Sheet 4? Sheet 4.0? It shows 4.0 of the FDP? There you go. Is that it? Yeah, 4.0. So there's some kind of walls and things that are described down on this lower right-hand bottom corner. And we're not approving that, so I don't know why that detail's in there. It's not part of the FDP. Not on that side, it's the other side, I'm sorry. Yes, there. There's, there's some, what was it? Future maintenance access? No, there was some online, there was actual... No, there was actual some detail of some kind of walls and stuff. But this looks like a different, different than I have online. So... Okay.
Does someone want to address that lighting question about whether the lights are different? And then the question about the access on the north side of the... Okay. I remember something about the lighting being shorter as we were around town, the town square was lower.
Well, I know I read something too about residential area different lighting than in the town square area. But I don't know in this FDP if we're really that far outside of the town square to have it different. I'm not saying that we, you know, can't be different. I'm just trying to...
That's a good question.
Make sure we have consistency.
The lighting plan is different from Main Street. And that's what they're proposing. A little bit different fixture as they transition from core to the rest of the project. The question I asked at the beginning, that's the answer.
I know. I'm trying to...
Less than right. A different lighting standard or whatever for this area.
Is the two questions I believe that are pending are relating to if we can add a street to connect to the cemetery and about the street lighting. We don't have the ability to add a street to connect up to the cemetery. There are pathways, we have pathways going a lot of locations to accommodate pedestrians and bike riders, but those can't just use, can't just turn those into streets. And the, that particular pathway that you're referencing is off of this exhibit, but it goes around, it just connects to a trail that goes up to Coal Creek area.
Now, Randy, though, that one that's shown there goes, you just flashed on with your, that one, right there, and goes around to this front of the cemetery and then over here, that's actually a roadway for the irrigation access and easement. So I'm not suggesting make it a street, but would it be able to be used in case we did need to get a car up to the cemetery?
There's sort of two embedded concepts there. One is it's not a road. There are, there is a small section of it that is built as a road. The entire alignment is built as a trail. So there's just a very small section to a certain manhole that is built as a road. And the, and then sort of the other element is the town owns the land. If there's an emergency or some reason the town needs to, you know, drive a vehicle, you select the right vehicle, can drive up and back, no problem. Most vehicles could drive on an eight-foot trail with no problem. That's traditionally the way that we provide maintenance. So the maintenance companies use small pickups and drive on the trails all the time. So I think that can be, I'm pretty confident that can be accommodated. At the end of the day, all that lands, the town's land, the town maintains the trails, the town maintains the park. If the town wants to have an event where if they think driving, people need to drive from this location up to here, I'm pretty confident it could be done. If they want to drive around here, it gets a lot more difficult because this is a trail and it just connects to other trails. It doesn't connect up to any roadways. As it relates to the lighting fixtures, we're pulling up the lighting fixtures on Main Street. As your staff mentioned, the Main Street has special lighting fixtures that are quite a bit taller and not really pedestrian-friendly for all the sort of design elements in these lights. Traditionally, you want them to be lower so people can appreciate those design elements on Main Street. We wanted them to be more dual-purpose and to accommodate festival lighting. So they're designed, they're enhanced strength. They have connections so that there can be festival lighting across the street. And when you get into that and crossing Main Street, height becomes an issue for vehicles and all types of things. So they ended up being 18-foot lighting fixtures. We made a lot of debates, should they be 14 feet, 16 feet, 18 feet? How high can we go? When we come into, every place other than Main Street, the lighting fixtures will be much smaller in the range of 10 to 12 feet.
Do they look similar? I thought the design looked different.
I believe they look similar.
Okay.
I can't prove that because I don't have the exhibit. I can't prove that because I don't have the exhibit. Do we have a plan?
So there's two, you are correct, there's two different lights shown. The light shown on the left is the light that was selected for the town center core. The light that's shown on the right, the shorter light, is new on this FDP for the Superior Town Center. And the reason the applicant selected that light fixture is it's consistent with the light fixtures that are installed here along Coal Creek Drive, here in original Superior. So their desire was to carry that through into the town center.
Yes, on FDP one, there are two light fixtures. There's this light fixture, and there's another one, which is just that light fixture that I described a little bit ago. That's a unique, it's a totally unique light fixture that'll only ever appear on Main Street. And this is our secondary light fixture for secondary streets. And you can see it, well, if you were looking at FDP one and comparing, you'll see that the other light fixtures at this same scale come up to here. And it has two, has a central pole that has two light fixtures. And then, it shows how it would accommodate the festival lighting streaming across. So this is a new light fixture that's not in, it's not in FDP one.
That's the one you're going to use, though? The one on the right? Around like Village Green and along that? Is that what you're proposing?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I thought it was the other one, so I like this one on the left, or the right, excuse me. And it directs the light down and so you, so much.
One of your other questions had been about path lighting in the Village Green, and there was a condition that addressed increasing the lighting to?
Right, and I don't think it says path lighting, though, which is, you know, increasing the lighting of those type of light poles, I think was what you were referencing, was it, Lisa?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, but I really, you know, if you, and I'm sure you all have walked in the, around the pass, through the parks at night, that path lighting is very wonderful to have. If you don't have it, you know, a streetlight over here, half a block away, doesn't help much when you're trying to find your way along this sidewalk.
So we accept the condition to work with staff to make sure, to prove that we have lighting, and if we don't, we'll add more. I don't like the word "path lighting," candidly, because I think that references spottards, which I think are just a cheap way of accommodating lighting, and they're, I think they're more obstacles, they don't add anything aesthetically to the environment. They are maintenance problems, and I think they're just a cheap way of accommodating lighting. So if we have, if we need to add more lighting, we'll add more. We'll change the spacing of the light poles that we've shown in the FDP.
Take a look and walk through Purple Park some night, and that lighting is very nice. What's been added in the last two years? The original lighting there wasn't very good, and as you said, it was a maintenance nightmare. But the ones that they put in there now really help you find your way along that, those paths through there. I would just recommend that, that. I love walking through Purple Park at night.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay. If there's no other questions or comments, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. There's, nobody has anything else? Okay, everybody good to close the public hearing? Okay, public hearing's closed. So now, commission discussion. You want to start?
I like what he did with the Village Green Park. I really do, it's a good idea. To make those grills on each end and to do the lighting. I love it, I agree with the duration of the grills. I think what they were trying to do there was to sort of multitude functions in that park, so it isn't just a gathering event like using the gazebo or the playground at the opposite end. I think it was just kind of, the thought was to give a lot of different ideas to Village Green. The dog park, it's a good idea. I mean, it looks like a piece of land that can't be used. So I think the other park that's currently in use, directly, is pretty well-used, so. They've put them in downtown a couple places where they're expanding, you know, and a lot of people had a lot of conversation about whether they'd be used by people, but everyone that's gone in has gotten overused.
And look at the water, Lisa.
Yeah, so I think there's always a need, and this is a dog-friendly state, speaking as a dog owner. So anyway, I think it's a good idea for a piece of land with the backside of a building. Not going to be very useful. Controversy on Avenue D with the thirty versus thirty-four on the off-site parking. I understand Randy's dilemma, you got some trade-offs. Looks like we're squashing a lot of stuff in this development. So that's what you almost have to do. And to be honest with you, off-site parking's hard to achieve with this many detention ponds that I see going. So that's my comment.
Okay. Excuse me.
I don't have any other comments other than what I've already provided. And I think the grill, the only reason I talked about the grill on the side with the playgrounds is, that's a pretty small park, so, you know, and how many gatherings is the question that you're going to have in there. It's more of a place where you're going to come and probably read rather than have a huge picnic. And there are a lot of other places within Superior to do that as well. And I like to have the streets as wide as possible, so thirty-four is good from my perspective.
Okay. Jim?
I thought it was great. I also like what, what the Village Green is shaping up like. It looks terrific. I guess more generally, it gives me just great comfort to see the collaborative working relationship that, between the developer and town staff, Fred and Lisa and their team. You know, the willingness to listen to concerns identified and incorporate those, and I think it's, it looks, it looks great so far.
I just have one question. Is there going to be any kind of permanent seating in the gazebo around the edges?
Randy, it's an R.C. Superior. We're happy to consider seating in the gazebo. The challenge you have when you put seating under shelter is you can accommodate environments, you know, people you don't really want to accommodate really well here. So it's something the town has to really, really think hard about.
That's a thought.
No, I'm not. In general, I'm fine as proposed. As far as the meaning of these goes, I'm sort of leaning towards allowing the applicant to figure that out. I mean, this, we're not demographic moving in there. He's designed this for a demographic that's moving in there. Grills make sense, put grills in, he'll take grills out if grills don't work. He knows the details, I think, are, I think as much flexibility as we can provide the applicant for that is, parks and everything else, because it's really until the demographic moves in, you kind of don't know what you're going to need there. So I would encourage us as a town to allow this to develop and kind of allow the applicant to figure that out as, as new residents move in. So as far as Avenue D goes, yeah, with everyone, the parking does make sense, so, I mean, we have to, I would probably be in favor of gaining twenty-eight spaces and having a slightly more narrow road than having a wide road, but, man, that's my opinion there. I think the dog park's an awesome idea. It's, here, you're not, people aren't, for people in that area are not going to walk over or get in their car and drive over. They don't do it down here in original town or sign more, they go to the park and that becomes a dog park. So, and that's a problem. I mean, you know, so they let dogs run loose and they don't clean up after their dogs. So if there's an opportunity to put a dog park in to reduce the chance of them going on the fields, which is what they'll do if we don't have one, I think that's a great idea. So, and that's all I got.
Two things. When I first heard about the dog park, I'm like, mm, no, that didn't seem too appealing. But as it was explained, it made more sense to me, and I'm for that. I do like the Village Green, especially since it's so close to the school site.
I think it might get used a lot by kids and parents for that. Those are your comments.
Okay. For my comments, I'm very pleased that the Discovery Office Park has been integrated into the town center, and I think that's just great for the town, great for, for both developments, and so happy that that's come together so quickly. I like what's proposed on the Village Green. I think we do have to, at a certain point, say, here's what we're going to put in paper instead of waiting for reports down the line. I think this is significantly what's been talked about before, so I think it's a great start, and I'm sure there'll be a few minor modifications, but I think it's a great start. And dog park, I also like the idea of a dog park. Like Phyllis, I was kind of questioning the need, but I'm not a dog owner, so I don't know that world as well. But those that do, it's, I think it's, we're adding a lot of homes over there, and I think we'll definitely need it, and I think the residents over there will really appreciate that amenity. So I think that's a great idea to put it in there. And I think it's a great spot for it, because I think had it been put anywhere else, it would have raised objections from someone. So good thinking on, on the place to put it. I think it should be a good fit for that. And I think ultimately, some off-street parking in that vicinity probably would be a good thing to add, because it, otherwise, I think, street parking there could get congested. So having a little bit of off-street parking would probably be a good idea. So those are my comments. In terms of the conditions, I didn't, I made some notes, but I really didn't make any notes of additional conditions that anybody felt like we needed to add, other than what staff has proposed. Is that correct? In terms of conditions on these various items, I didn't hear any of the commissioners speaking of additional conditions that they'd like to see. I just wanted to check with the commissioners and see if there was any other conditions that we wanted to add, other than what's been drafted by staff.
From a cost standpoint, are we going with these amenities as kind of proprietary in thinking? You know, we're doing, so you're picking out something, just a little bit.
We really shouldn't have Q and A during the discussions standpoint.
So as a condition, we want to encourage other, other amenity designs.
I don't think we can get more specific than we've already gotten here.
It's pretty specific.
It's pretty specific.
That's an option.
Right, okay.
I mean, I'd be happy to pass along that we would be, that we would encourage more flexibility and more the applicant to set the amenities in the town center, and more specific, for sure. I mean, if that's a general comment we want to pass along as a commission, I'd certainly be in support of that.
But the condition, there is a condition that says the town and developer work together on amenities. I think that pretty much covers it. Okay. Anything else?
My only question, my only question is on condition D. It talks about Avenue D, whether you want to retain that as it's written, where it says Avenue D shall be thirty-four feet wide. I just, I heard some discussion, I thought about that one.
So currently, it says thirty-four feet?
It does, right?
Okay. And the applicant's requesting thirty feet with an addition of twenty-six parking spaces?
Only if it's approved, though, because that hasn't been approved yet. So I think that unless, I think, I, you know, I think we should go with what staff, Alex is recommending, that we would recommend or propose thirty-four foot wide unless there has to be a change due to the approval of parking in that area that requires it to be reduced. Because if, yeah, they're the, in that. So I don't, I don't think we should give up on the thirty-four foot width, which is in the standards and in the requirements, unless there's an, unless we get approval for that parking there.
That condition seems to give us the most flexibility, so I think we leave it as, leave it as.
Leave it as. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we were requested to vote on these in a particular order, so shall I follow that order as we go through these?
Can I just listen to each other?
Okay, so the first one is the final plat, Discovery Office Park. So we have someone to make a motion to?
I've got him here. I'll move to approve resolution of town, Superior Planning Commission approving the final plat, case number S U B dash F P dash twenty-fourteen dash one, with the following conditions. Conditions first?
Five.
I'm sorry, yeah, P C five, series twenty-fourteen. P C dash five, series twenty-fourteen. Conditions, applicant shall make minor technical and redline corrections to plans as identified by town staff. Public access easement shall be added where existing sidewalks are constructed outside of public lights of way. A sixty-foot wide public access easement shall be additive plat between block nine, lot one, and block one, lot three, for the entire length of block one, lot three.
Hold it. You're reading the conditions for the final development plan?
Oh, am I? I thought I had.
Plan first.
My apologies, Lord, this is, this is five A.
Yeah.
I'm reading motion on five A.
Hold on a second. Okay, I'm listening to P C five, this for?
S U B F P twenty-fourteen dash one.
Yeah, you're doing the final development plan first.
Well, that's, that's the one that's our, this is just.
It says five A, public hearing for, and it says preliminary in the agenda of its final plat.
Okay. If I stand correct, sorry.
So this is correct? What's in?
You're correct.
Okay, cool. C is sixty-foot wide, well, so I went through that. And D, block one, lot three, shall be revised on all applicable sheets to be called block one, lot two.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McCool.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Eaton. All those in favor? Pass is unanimous. The next one to vote on is the final plat, Superior Town Center.
See, I'll move to approve resolution P C six, series twenty-fourteen. Resolution of the town, Superior Planning Commission approving the final plat, case number S U B dash F P dash twenty-fourteen dash two, with the following conditions. Conditions for the final plat. Applicant shall make minor technical and redline corrections to plans as identified by town staff. An access easement of sufficient size to accommodate a trail connection to the US thirty-six bikeway shall be added to the final plat in the location shown on the plans for Superior Town Center, Final Development Plan Phase Two. An access easement of ten feet in width shall be added for the plat, be added to the plat for trail and maintenance access from Avenue E to Superior Cemetery, with the exact location of the easement to be determined by the town. And a utility easement of twenty feet in width shall be added to the plat along the entire property line of Superlot five, adjacent to US thirty-six, to be used for force, main access, and other necessary utilities.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McCool. Second by Commissioner Eaton. All those in favor? Pass is unanimous. Next item is the final development plan for Discovery Office Park.
So I'm moving to approve resolution P C seven, P C dash seven, series twenty-fourteen. Resolution of the town, Superior Planning Commission recommending approval to the Board of Trustees, the Final Development Plan Two, case number F D P dash twenty-fourteen dash one, for Discovery Office Park, with the following conditions. Applicant shall make minor technical and redline corrections to plans as identified by town staff. Block one, lot three, shall be revised on- One, Lot Three, shall be revised on all applicable sheets to be called Block One, Lot Two.
Have a motion by Commissioner McCool, second by Commissioner Eaton. All those in favor? Passes unanimous. Final item is Final Development Plan Phase Two, Superior Town Center.
Make a motion to approve resolution P C dash eight, series twenty-fourteen. Resolution of the Town Superior Planning Commission recommending approval to the Board of Trustees, the Final Development Plan, case number F D P dash twenty-fourteen dash two, for Superior Town Center, with the following conditions. Applicant shall make minor technical and red line corrections to plans as identified by town staff. The dog park design shall use similar materials and fixtures as those used at the Autry Park Dog Park Facility. The lighting plan for the Village Green shall be refined to ensure sufficient security lighting throughout the Village Green. Avenue D shall be thirty-four foot wide, inclusive of, inclusive of on-street parking on both sides, and if programmed amenities are approved for tract D one at a later date, additional off-street parking may be required. Final design and location of traffic calming features along Discovery Parkway shall be coordinated with town staff. Final design and location of traffic calming features along Discovery Parkway shall be coordinated with town staff. The final design of amenities in the Village Green, including the gazebo and play area, shall be jointly determined by the town and developer, and the street names on all sheets shall match the final plat prior to recording.
Okay, motion by Commissioner McCool, second by Commissioner Eaton. All those in favor? Passes unanimous. Okay, that takes us to staff announcements and usualities.
Just a few announcements this evening. June seventeenth is the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting. At this time, we have nothing on the agenda, so there will be no meeting that evening. June twenty-third, it's anticipated that the planning commissioners who are up for reaport, reappointment will be voted upon by the Town Board. At this time, Jim Satell, Commissioner Satell, and Commissioner Rida Zell have asked to be reappointed, and Commissioner McCool, Vice Chairperson McCool, and Commissioner Rochelle Master have not, have asked not to be reappointed at this time. So they'll be recognized by the Town Board as well. And let your neighbors and everyone know we'll be advertising for two vacancies on the Planning Commission as well. So that's all we have. Anything else?
No more?
Okay, thank you very much.
Go first.
Thank you.